Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Commission's special hearing to convene at 7:02 PM. We were to hear the petition of 170 Oran Oak Lane and 1180 James Farm Road, but the petitioner has asked for a continuance, which has been granted. So, there really is no action. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Semft.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that will close the public hearing, correct? Okay. Moving right along. We have, we do not have the town engineer or the conservation people here to talk about the MS4 permit, but there is some information in your packet regarding developing a public, a program for public information that I believe, Sismita, that you put that together, I assume? Do you want to tell us about?
Sure. I have taken over the CRS maintenance from Jay Hibansky, who initiated this program for the town, and he's still working on it really hard. But I'm assisting him and the other members of the CRS committee, representing the town, in developing a public information plan so that we can educate residents in floodplain areas and raise awareness on how to mitigate and how to quickly recover from disasters. So, in that context, the CRS manual, the Community Draining System manual, has a guidance on developing a program for public information. So, I enclosed a sample document that I downloaded from FEMA's webpage that shows the types of materials that can be disseminated among targeted audiences. And these can be phased out throughout the year so that in January, if you're talking about floods, in February, you can talk about mitigation projects, in March, you can talk about insurance. So, these are tailored at various topics, tailored to various topics. But for that to happen, we also need a committee in place, Public Information, PPI Committee, it's called, and we need volunteers for that. In New Haven, the City Plan Commission serves as a PPI Committee, but they are not elected representatives. So, in this case, because you are elected, we would need non-elected volunteers for this committee. You can, we can still have a few elected members, but, you know, the makeup of the committee should be in such a manner that we need, you know, volunteers, somebody representing from real estate community or brokers. So, if you happen to know anybody and if you're interested to pursue this direction, please keep this in mind when we meet next time. Please suggest some names and then we can coordinate a committee together.
Do you have any kind, do we have any kind of an application developed or anything like that, that we could start? An interest sheet for people?
I don't have anything yet, but if you can suggest something, I can put together the names list and then we can select from there.
Well, just some way that we can qualify them in some way.
Mr. Staley.
Yes, I'd like to, I don't know a lot about it, PPI. I've read all your documentation from other towns and work. It's interesting. I'd like to know more about it, and I'm going to try to meet with you next week or the week after.
Okay.
And if it's something that I could be useful in, I would gladly.
Sure. Yes, and we also are meeting regularly now. We met the town engineer, us from the planning and zoning, me and Jay, and Larry Ciccarelli from Emergency Management. And we also invited Parks, Chad Esposito. So, as a town staff team, we are trying to work together so we can, you know, educate people about this flooding and mitigation and pursue independent projects together instead of, you know, each department doing its own thing.
And Stratford residents will also receive?
Yes.
Yes.
We prepared a brochure for them, a flood information brochure. So, that will be probably sent out through tax bills every year if this PPI is instituted. So, that's a good way to, you know, let them know every year. And besides that, we can hold workshops in the floodplain areas of the town. And we can also do newsletters and, you know, mayor's outreach, mayor's community calendar could be one way we can, you know, reach out to the town community.
So, let me just, I want to clarify something. You have a core group of town employees, department heads, and you want to have how many elected?
We need, we don't need elected. We need representatives, at least five to seven members.
Five to seven members. So, you're looking, but they could be elected, you're just?
Yes. So, if you see page number three that I gave in the document that is titled, "Developing a Program for Public Information" for credit under CR, Community Draining System of National Flood Insurance Program. Page three, PPI Committee Membership. It says there must be at least five people on the community. That must be representation from community's floodplain management office, from community's public information office. At least half of the members must be from outside the local government, which is stakeholders, and somebody from a local insurance agency and somebody from a local bank or lender. So, this is a typical makeup. And once we get a PPI committee in place, it also helps us to secure more points towards the CRS program and more discounts towards the annual flood insurance pause.
Good, okay. Before we go any further, if you're here for the public hearing, the applicant has asked for a continuance, so we are not having a public hearing tonight. It'll be next month in January. A little later on, we're going to talk about our schedule. So, it may be either January 15th or January 22nd, but you can check back with the office. Okay, yeah, we announced it a little earlier, so, before you came.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, John.
I said, the office is new, Bob.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, anyway, thank you for coming out, but it'll be next month. Okay, now, back to the PPI, whatever. Yeah, PPI. Mr. Watson, did you have a question?
No, I'm happy to see this happening. I know this is part of the resiliency project that we worked on. It's very definitely part of the resiliency, and it also will greatly affect whether we qualify for that five percent reduction. The only, my only comment is if we're going to try to go for community members, then I think what we ought to be doing is looking for people that are in some of the districts that are most prone to flooding. Because that's where we really need to increase more public awareness and public participation. So, but looking at your list from what had been done earlier, it does include planning down in addition to the floodplain manager and public information. It lists a whole series of planning, drainage, code enforcement, all of that. So, technically, we could have more than one or two planning members on it. So, I just think that we are becoming more and more concerned with issues of the floodplains and how we react to it in making our decisions. So, I would love to see at least one planning member, person, be a member of this so they can bring, at least bring that information back. I'm not necessarily volunteering, but I think, no, I think that, I think that it really should be joined to what planning is doing because it's going to affect all the decisions that are made in the coming years. The only other, my only other question was, and I looked at, I assume Attachment D, am I jumping ahead? Is this your?
Yes.
Is it still part of the same?
Yes, that's a sample that was created for New Haven. This is the first.
Looking at it 2016, which predates the FEMA upgrade flood map.
Yes.
So, it didn't mention it in here, and I just want to make sure that what we're doing is not 100-year floodplain. We really are doing the new revised idea of floodplain because that's part of what this PPI needs to get across.
Yeah, I think this is just a sample.
I know. I just want to make, I want to be very clear about that, that what we're trying to get public information out about is the fact that we live in a different world.
Yes.
That we have, we have conditions that where flooding once only was 500 years, it's now every 100 years where it was every 100 years. It's now every 10 years what was. I mean, we are now, we are now suffering through a very different thing. And areas that once flooded irregularly, now are going to flood seasonally. We're going to flood like we're having now. They're going to flood multiple times seasonally. And we need to make sure that, as a government, as a town, we're really starting to educate people that there's only so much we can do. And these methods here are, the old-fashioned Yankee resiliency is what we have to depend upon, at least for the time being, until we find ways of raising magic money. We're forced to doing that, into doing that.
Mr. Staley.
Sismita?
Sismita.
Okay. Close?
Yes, close it off.
I just do, so, these are, this Attachment D is an example.
It's an example, yes.
You've done a lot of work this month, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
So, we can go through this and sort of profile is what we're going to try to mirror.
Right. So, you have a little homework to, I mean, some have read it, but, you know, this time through, you might want to write some notes, but also, think about some people that might sit on a committee for this. So, that's another part of the homework. Mr. Semft?
No, I was just going to ask, was, did you implement this prior to Sandy or after Sandy in New Haven?
We did after Sandy.
After Sandy, so was it in, did you feel it was necessary after Sandy hit that it needed to put something in place, especially with the shoreline in New Haven? I would assume.
Yes, and a lot of it is about educating people how to build responsibly and how to prepare for floods. So, we did as part of the CRS program, and after we entered the program, I did a couple of workshops in a few neighborhoods, and it was very successful, like, you know, letting people know how to look up a floodplain map, knowing where the flood risk is, if they are in a flood zone or not. Those kind of basic stuff, too, nobody knows. So, it was useful in actually letting people understand, you know, their risk. I should also add that we, Brian Donovan, building inspector, has also met with us, and we are, you know, planning to meet regularly every month as an internal team to prepare the messages and send them out and to, you know, see for, you know, funding for mitigation projects or something that, you know, might help in improving the resiliency of the town. Yes.
Mr. Staley.
Yes, I'm very interested in this. The people that live in the flood zones, with all the information that comes over the network, are we talking about robocalls, mailings?
Yes.
And I'd like to know why and what we're going to tell them to do.
So, for example, if you look at page 14 of Attachment D for New Haven that I gave you, it's page 14, 4.0 Messages and Outcomes. So, there are six topics that.
Page 14?
Page 14. Seven topics, actually, that FEMA wants us to focus on. Know your flood hazard, insure your property, protect people from hazards, protect your property from hazards, build responsibly, protect natural floodplain functions and flood warning and preparedness. So, as you can see, everybody has a role in this. Like, know your flood hazard. Planning and zoning and building are responsible for implementing this. And if you look at flood warning and preparedness, emergency management is responsible for implementing it. And what we, like, in Milford, whenever there's a flood happening, a flash flood or anything, we get text alerts. We get phone calls to home if we have signed up for it. We have River 311, Rivers 911, or Everbridge system, whatever is the alert system.
Yeah, the town.
Thank you very much.
And the town of Stratford has it, too, but we want as many people to sign up for it as possible, so.
I just want, I just would like to be meaningful and to get a credit.
It's going to be meaningful. It's going to actually have a huge impact on the way people actually, you know, if they're more prepared, half the job is done because you don't have to spend too much in rebuilding.
Mr. Watson.
My understanding is that this will eventually become mandatory, that right now, they're trying to encourage communities to adopt this, but eventually FEMA, because of their overwhelming budget losses because of all their output, eventually this is going to get wrapped into the package that if you don't do this, your community is not going to be eligible for funds. It will start to become, it will begin to penalize us, I think, so that, I think we're, we're still ahead of the pack by doing this now. We'll be ahead of a lot of communities. And so, I still think we're moving in a very good direction. The one thing I would love to see included in this, because I did read through this, is that we need to start educating the public in general about some of these issues, but we also need to start educating the building community. And I say that with great respect, that I know that Connecticut is upgrading all of its building codes this year to reflect this and that, that there needs to be explanation why those building codes are being upgraded in floodplain areas with some builders. And, quite honestly, people that are doing renovations. That, that we need to, I don't know if we could package videos or do anything like that, that we could actually have available, or YouTube downloads where people could go and look and see what makes a weather-resistant house? What makes a house that's, that's good for a 10-year storm? That's good for multiple flooding events? I mean, there are, there are new building techniques that you could have a house flood and two months later, you can be back to normal because you use plastic on everything above, below 10 feet and build something that will never, it doesn't matter if it gets wet. You're essentially building a stable boat. So, there are things that can be considered, and they're discovering that the cost is an equal expense.
Well, yeah, well, case in point, because I happen to be in the construction end of the business. And if you look at Mexico City and the flood, the hurricane down in Florida, there was one building that, or one home that remained standing. And that particular homeowner had a contractor come in, and I think it was about 20% more to build it up, not only to withstand winds of 150 miles an hour, I believe it was 175 to 200 miles an hour. And the construction that he did was significant, but it withstood the, you know, that 100-year storm, really, when you look at, you know, when it came down to the flooding, when it came down to the winds and everything else. So, I think, you know, when Hurricane Andrew hit down in Florida, the Miami-Dade building codes reached its way up, all the way up the East Coast, which is now implemented for all building construction going on. And those codes are being improved on a, almost on a monthly basis now based on all these storms that we're having. We see it specifically in the roofing end of it with protecting your roof, yeah. So, yeah, I think, you know, those, those codes are beneficial, but I think the construction end of it, especially if you build along the shoreline, you know, and yeah, it's going to cost you a little more money upfront, but I think from an insurance standpoint, the money that you would save from these insurance companies and everything else, it's substantial and less liability to the, to the towns and the municipalities around, so.
Well, also, I think for the towns, for the town, it ensures that we are going to have a stable tax base. We're not going to end up with people who walk away from their properties and houses. We actually, it actually will help the whole town eventually, which is part of the story that needs to be told, that we can't afford to lose 5,000 of our housing stock because of flooding. That would really affect Stratford a lot if we were to lose 25% of what we have. So, in any case, I thank you for your work. I appreciate what you're doing.
Mr. Staley.
Yeah, one last comment, please. The program for public information, PPI, seems like it's only going toward the flood zones and problems like that, water. We have, you see what happens in California, Colorado, what's been happening all over the West, Midwest with fire. Is this only for flood?
That's a good question. I think it's for any kind of disaster that, you know, the community is at risk. In this case, Stratford has a risk of flooding more than wildfires because of the location. So, most Northeast communities focus mostly on inland and coastal flooding and sea level rise and extreme temperatures. But if you look at the West, it may be a different kind of message because of the disaster risk.
Okay. Do we still want to have the town engineer and conservation come and talk about the MS4 stormwater permit?
I, I think, it comes up in every single project that we talk.
Okay.
And the idea of whether rainwater is going to stay on the property or is going to go into our stormwater systems is a very expensive proposition that we need to make sure we're clear about. So, I think that the whole town, my understanding is that, that we don't have the choice anymore. That if you're going to build something here, fresh build, you've got to keep the water on your property in underground storage tanks or however you do it. You're not hooking up to our stores, our stormwater systems. We're not permitted to do that anymore. So, that's a, something that everybody needs to know.
Okay, which is fine. What I would suggest that maybe February or March, because I think January will be tied up with the special, so. If you could arrange for that, that would be great. Mr. Staley.
What are we talking about, on the agenda, number seven or six?
Actually, it's kind of started off as number one.
Oh, yeah, it's number one.
And we kind of expanded. My bad.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, moving right along, if there's nothing else on that particular subject matter, you should have received the minutes from the October 16th meeting in your pony. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the October meeting.
Thank you very much. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's passed, that's done. Okay, moving right along here. There are no zoning referrals. There are no CAM site plan reviews. There are no 824s. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sismita.
No, there's nothing.
Is there any discussion about the town plan of conservation development at this time? Moving right along, the discussion of Section 5.3 of the zoning regulation, you should have gotten something from our town planner regarding the Section 5.3 of the zoning regulations, explaining how it's, it came about, a little history and how it's calculated. They also put out, I assume these are some of your suggestions as far as options. There are three options listed right now from the planning office. You also have a map of apartments. The only question I had on this, if I may, I don't see, what is it? Oh, God, on Broadbridge Avenue, Deerfield Woods, is it?
Is there another name for it?
I do not, I don't see it. Are you looking at it, Matt?
You know what, I don't see it either.
I think it's Deerfield Woods, and I think it's in Stratford.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is in Stratford.
Could you just look into, it's Deerfield Woods. So, I think it would just be in addition to this.
Okay. Is it also called Broadbridge Apartments?
No.
No, it's a separate one.
Yeah, that's another one. Yeah, I see the Broadbridge. It's up by, unless it's now called Silver Terrace Condos?
Oh, because that's Silver Lane, right next to it. So, that could be it.
No, it's not.
Are those condos in there?
There might be.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about the Broadbridge Apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I.
Yeah.
I didn't notice anything else. That was the only one that I noticed. And then, there's an Excel chart that actually lists each one and the total number of units, what the equivalents are, when it was approved, the neighborhood address and notes. I think it's a really very good report, other than the Deerfield Woods. I don't know if you want to take this home and look at it?
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting so we have a chance to review.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Staley? Did you want to make a comment before?
If you second, I'll have comments.
Okay, you're second.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I.
Before we table it, we'll discuss.
Two, second.
I'm counting.
Okay, it's just a matter of, I have so many questions. I sent an email to our new planning assistant, and I would like to meet with you.
Okay.
Rather than publicly.
Okay.
Things that are, just take a lot of time, so not to take up here.
Yeah.
Well, there's an average of 100 in every neighborhood over. And my question is why? So, then the other question I have is to continue, the options. Very concerned with the options, so if we're going to take this up next meeting, I hope. Thank you very much.
So, you can get your answers, question, your questions answered. I think probably some, one of the answers to how do we go over the 100 is probably affordable housing units. Some other things, TOD that are exempt from the 5.3, so.
Well, supposedly, there's been nothing since 2016, which shows a mandate of no more. And now, there's options, so.
Yeah, I, I think the best way to do this is to redirect everything towards TOD, that where, you know, you're encouraging multifamily and high density at the core, and you want it to be walkable, bikeable area and not disturb the single-family residential neighborhoods as much and keep their character intact. Of course, you still need some multifamily, like for working families, and that's something I was also thinking that maybe we should pursue a study on affordable housing. Not affordable housing in a sense workforce housing for the town, for teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses, what their, you know, income ranges are, what the market is like, how much is the rent right now that they're paying? Are there any options for them? Could, you know, some towns look into, you know, accessory units as their only way of, you know, allowing this kind of workforce housing? But then, there are other options out there, and I am looking at the possibility of exploring CDBG grant money for next year. I was talking to Jay also about that, and we were very interested in, you know, doing something for affordable.
So, has there been an in-depth study of the 13 neighborhoods that qualify for areas? Have the areas ever been looked at?
I, we have just looked at what has been approved so far.
Okay.
And where they have been approved. Have we reached the cap or not was the question that we are. Have we reached the cap or not was the question that we are often asked by various, you know, real estate professionals, attorneys, and now we've come to the conclusion that we not only met the cap, but we exceeded the cap by far. And now, the question is, if anybody wants to build multifamily with eight units or more in the town, section 5.3 may not allow them because it's, you know, it's exceeded its cap. What is the option for them? Shall we, you know, the next option would be TOD. TOD allows that kind of development in town center.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
In my two years of, as an alternate sitting on planning, I saw long discussions about this. This has been on our agenda every single month, at least two years. There's been many discussions. We determined a long time ago that every single of those 10 neighborhoods are already beyond their limits, and some of them much more than that. The other problem that we've, I've always seen is that that map, that map drawn was for elementary schools that don't even exist in many communities. So, it doesn't even represent something that we can look at in terms of current Stratford. It really goes back to, I don't know when that was first done, in the 1940s or something. It really is something that's vestigial to what we're doing. It's been left alone for people who did not want to see any kind of multiple-family housing. But we now have, we now have put the limit. Everything that we discovered in our research at the time was that the only way we get apartments built in this town is by exclusion or by exception. And essentially, what we have already arrived at is the only place you're building apartments is within the TOD, because that's the only place where we have a real exemption for it. Or the other area is where there's already current apartments, and they can come in as a, I don't know exactly what the, I mean, they have, can build a better case that there's already an apartment building in this area, there's already condos here, so I want to build condos on the lot next to it, and then it's hard to say, you can't. They can say, but next door there's, it makes it a really hard case to fight legally, I think, that, from what we discovered. So, we were, the last planning board was very torn about this. We discussed it many times. We never, we never made a decision.
No, we didn't, but we also never had so much information.
Well, that's true. That's true, and I appreciate, I do appreciate all of this because it's something we kept asking for at the time, and poor Jay couldn't do everything, and I know that, so.
So, not only do we have information, we also have some options to consider, which we may tweak, you know, or accept or whatever, yeah. So, we have, which I think makes it a little bit easier.
Well, I just wanted to finish with the one thought that I had is that part of our stumbling block was exactly what the, the design standards people for apartment is working on, is that what we kept coming up with is that we could blow this, we could blow this unit if we could come up with a determination, which you've mentioned, that what is appropriate for these different neighborhoods. And if we could tie that into a design standard saying, you know, two-story buildings are all that's appropriate in this area. If you want to build apartments, great, but don't build them above two stories. Here, we're looking for maximum density, whatever. I mean, that, maybe that's something that should actually go into part of our design standards, saying that these are appropriate areas, these are the kinds of apartments that are appropriate for those communities. And I know it's a different, it's as difficult as what we're doing when we're dealing strictly with numbers, but I think that we never got beyond the numbers because no one knew how to make that solution either.
Do you sit on or go to the standards?
ARB. I will be sitting on the ARB meetings from January on, but so this is a good way to interact with them and, you know, carry on this discussion. I also want to add two things. One is that I, there were nearly more than 2,000 equivalent, I mean, apartment units approved in the town since 1940. But we were only looking from the date of 1984 because in 1983, we looked at all the zoning books, and in 1983, the section 5.3 was amended to include the equivalent cap, and that's when the 100 for neighborhoods was triggered. The second thing is, the neighborhood map was prepared in 1983, and I looked at the hand-drawn map and I started drawing it electronically. Many of the neighborhood boundaries were cutting off the parcels because somebody hand-drew it. Now, I did not manipulate anything. I just took everything as is. But going forward, we don't have to follow that. We can follow street center lines and to the closest street center line and amend the boundary. That's because in 2020, Census will release its data for all municipalities. And the way they release the data is by census strike boundaries, and the boundaries align to street center lines. They don't cut through parcels. So, if we have our neighborhood boundaries that are that way, it's easy to compile data by blocks, block groups, and create town profiles for housing, employment, you know, whatever you want to look in terms of Census. So, moving forward, there are so many next steps I see from this project to revise the neighborhood boundaries, to look at the regulations carefully, to understand the concept of planned developments like in neighborhoods like James Farm or Oak. It's a classic example where, you know, there are condominiums, and many people feel like they're already existing condos, so it has already, you know, changed its character from when, you know, it was in the past. But do we really want to encourage that level of density? Or do we want to institute your planned development districts with our set parameters? Or do you want them to look at TOD areas only specifically for now? So, these are the options that I mentioned in the report, and each comes with the pros and cons. Every option has good side and bad side, so we have to carefully wait out in future meetings and take it from there.
Mr. Sefton?
Yeah, I just want to say, we have to take into consideration too that times are changing, right? So, I think, you know, if you look at communities around, really around the tri-state area right now and some of the smaller communities that are attracting the millennials, they're able to attract the millennials because a lot of the millennials, they don't want a house, you know? They want something, and the TOD is a perfect solution for them, however. You know, once you tie in the TOD, and once you come to your limit as far as TOD, where do you outreach from there? Where do you stretch it from there? But I think we need to take that into consideration because if we're going to attract more of the youth to the community that don't necessarily want to buy a house, you know, you have to have options for them, and if we don't have those options, then they're going to end up going to another community. Case in point, you know, Stanford being a large city, the one thing you find throughout Stanford is everything seems to be going condominium, multifamily at this particular point, whether they be high rises or taking a, a small ranch and building it into a four-unit apartment. So, not that we necessarily want to see that here in Stratford, but it's something that we have to take into consideration in order to attract the younger youth and keeping them within our community. I think we've got a lot, you know, we've got the shoreline, we've got the TOD area, especially around the train, which is easy access into the city. And I think, you know, Stratford being an affordable community compared to the rest of Fairfield County, you know, I don't think we need, you know, we don't necessarily want to shut people out. I think we need to attract those people, but we need to do it in a way that is going to be conducive and attractive, instead of just throwing up condos and apartments anywhere.
I agree. I think it has to be balanced, and if I remember correctly, when the section 5.3 was adopted, the town was going through this influx of condominiums and apartments, and the townspeople were concerned that it was going to be turned into just apartment city, you know? And that would change the, really the structure and the ambiance, whatever you want to call it, of the town. And they were concerned about that, and I think that's why the 5.3 was put in place in 1984, but, or whenever it was.
Just one follow-up question to that is, do we have an idea of what the occupancy rate is in the present condominiums or apartments that we have?
I can pull that out from Census.
Yeah.
And I will need some time because I haven't, you know, researched that. So, if maybe by next meeting I can get you an answer on what the occupancy rate is.
I mean, that might be a telltale sign too if we have 100% occupancy rate and, you know, people are looking, you know?
But if we have a 50% rate, then maybe we don't want to go in that direction.
Exactly, yeah.
Mr. Staley?
Yes, a good point that Dan brought up with the density and the, what do we have now? I know personally, from where I live, there's big turnover. You never know, somebody moves in, a couple get divorced, the daughter moves back in. It's rotating constantly. So, to come up with a, you know, dead numbers, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. But we probably could come up with a number that would show density on the average.
Yes, I, and my hope is to work on that housing study in the next year if I can, you know? We're definitely very interested in putting together a CDBG grant application through the town for conducting this study to analyze those kind of questions, exactly the ones that you're talking about, you know? Because sometimes, some questions are more, you know, through public input than through any data portals that are out there, like people, you know, where do you work? How do you travel? What kind of home are you living in? Analyzing those trends helps to better inform this analysis. I also think that the case about Stanford is that Stanford is closer to New York, and so that's why you see a lot of, you know, apartments. In Stratford, I would, I still feel like there's a strong potential in and around the train station because of, you know, so many people who commute to New York from Stratford too, and they also commute as far as Hartford for their jobs. So, it's central, and there's a lot of potential, and Complete Streets is going to be implemented pretty soon. I think if the town does a good job in marketing these projects to potential developers and real estate professionals, I feel like it's brick by brick that will be built into place.
Mr. Staley?
Okay, I just want to end our conversation by saying that I am pro-development and with the right product, so to speak, in the right place. And I think we have a lot of potential in Stratford to figure that out, and I'm not opposed to height, but, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had a motion a while ago by Mr. Dan to table this for the next meeting. Another, some more homework for you all to do. Can I have a second?
I second it.
Oh, you seconded it? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will talk about that next month. All righty, there's no erosion and sediment control plan, no bond releases, unless, is there any, we really had a status update on the coastal resiliency plan, but anything on Greenway or Complete Streets? Mr. Watson?
I'm now officially the planning board rep on the Greenway project, and the one thing I learned at the last meeting, this beginning of December, was that there is hope to combine those two committees, that they're going to become one committee. They've suddenly realized that this is a network that's being built, which I've argued for several years with them, but both projects are, look like they're really moving along very well. We're very fortunate that we actually have the same developer doing both. So, there's great coordination between the two projects, which was not there before. So, I feel very hopeful. I looked at the plans for, from Broad Street down to the WPCA, and those are already done now. And I think they've overcome as many obstacles as they can overcome without tearing up the neighborhood with damaging the historic quality of the neighborhood, the least possible kind of things that they've done. I think that they've managed to put the paths in there in a sensible way that they're not, we're not seeing lots of new curbing, we're not seeing those kinds of things. They've really chosen to be very sensitive to the historic character of the neighborhood. So, I really appreciate what they've done. There are certain things that they've been very economical about by saying, we'd love to put in a million-dollar path here, but the budget doesn't allow it. We're going to put something in that's sensible. The other thing that I think, looking at the plans fairly closely, is that they have been very mindful of safety. So, I feel like what we have might not be the most sexy path around, but it will be a safe path. So, I feel pretty good about what I saw. And I, the next thing that we will be seeing, and it won't be until April, I think, we'll be meeting with the Complete Streets people to see how they're beginning to coordinate with the original Greenway project. So, those two will start to come together in a little clearer way because essentially, once they're done, they should look like the same trail. They are the same trail. So, I think by doing this first project in a very sensible means, that it limits the next project, except for the fact that it's in the TOD, there will be upgraded street dressings and, you know, signscapes and things like that. But it still is going to have a whole section of it that's on the road with just nothing more than paint striping and all of that. So, I think we're doing very well, particularly considering that Bridgeport's trail completion has just blown up in their face. They were ready to sign the deal, get everything started and start construction, and the local community just blew up and blew it out of the water, demanded everything go back to the drawing board. And so, hopefully, we will keep moving it forward at a fairly quick pace, and I think we're doing well.
Also, take that as a cautionary tale that to keep the public informed.
I also want to add that I would, I intend to attend Greenway committee meetings moving forward. I know Linda Pepin, she mentioned that you meet thrice or four times a year. And if I'm aware of the date in advance, I can make my schedule available. Yes, because I, it's something that I think ties into the overall planning that we're doing for the town.
Very good. Okay. Citations and summons. We are, should have been in your packet, the planning commission is being sued by Woodend LLC. If you might remember, I think it was at the October meeting?
Yes.
That we took this up as a subdivision. And since we're being sued, I have nothing more to say about it. You have it here. Do you have anything?
The attorneys are taking care of it at the moment, and they will involve us when it is necessary for us to get involved.
Okay. So, we'll...
May I make one simple comment? But if you go online, you can actually read what their citation is, what the complaint is online at the, in the judge's docket. That's all I'll say about it. Go read it, and you'll see.
Okay.
Excuse me? I don't, I don't, I can't tell you the reference number, but it should be, you should be able to find it here by going, pulling up the document.
Okay, so you can all do your research on that. As far as discussion of signs, we have Mr. Staley's report. I also have been talking with Dectronics and Netco Systems who do these kinds of signs as well. They do scoreboards as well. So, I had hoped we'd have a picture, but I didn't get it yet. So, I'll try to share that as we, before our next meeting. Mr. Staley?
One comment on that. The, someone else, I had two other contacts contact me. Word gets out quick. But I really did not engage that. Word gets out quick, but I really did not engage that, but the, it's not my, my area to, to do that. So, I think we have enough information moving forward, whether or not. I did look at, again, West Broad versus Paradise Green and Main Street. I still think that should be number one. So, that's it.
Well, we also can discuss with the suppliers, you know, what their suggestions are as far as what makes sense, so we'll still be working on that.
Good.
Hopefully, we'll get to a point where we can make a proposal to the town as far as that particular...
Sooner the better.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I have this information from Economic Development on electronic signs that I was asked to share with the commissioners.
Oh, good.
This is an example of Old Saybrook that they've shared with me.
You want me to pass it over? Sure.
If you want it, since this was shared on Friday, and we were not sure where our commission hearing was headed, I was going to share this at the next meeting, but now that we're discussing it, I request you to please take a look at this and research it, and come back with your comments at the next meeting, so we can discuss further.
This is, this is good to, to start with that. Great, thank you. So, we can, we have even more homework to do. I'll keep you guys busy. Okay, the planning commission meeting schedule. Just to explain, in October, I sent out a draft of a schedule that had our January meeting on January 15th, and I had hoped that there would have been a November meeting to pass it. Unfortunately, that got canceled. There is an ordinance that states that we have to, we have to post our schedule 30 days in advance. Today's December 18th, December, January 15th would be too soon. So, we have two ways we can go. We can stay with January 15th and make it a special meeting, or we can go the following week, which is January 22nd, and just have the meeting then and post it that way. It's up to, to you all, if you're available.
If it's legal, I'm fine with that.
I prefer the 22nd, I'm going to be away on the, the first three...
Three weeks.
Weeks of January.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
I don't know if I will go through the 22nd.
Okay.
I will know that probably later in the week, but I won't know right now.
Okay, well, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is pass the one with the 22nd, get it posted, and just let us know, Carol, because if we wait till a couple more days, we're going to be within the same problem of the 30 days. So, could I have a motion to accept the, the new schedule drafted on December 18th, which starts with a meeting on January 22nd? Mr. Staley?
Make a motion to approve the schedule as shown, and...
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. So, that issue is taken care of. Any comments and concerns? Yes, we do? Mr. Watson. Oh, yeah, okay. How you doing over there? I should have checked. Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, comments, concerns, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, second? Mr. Watson, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you all for coming out. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, enjoy.